All right, my phone and my clock on the computer are both showing five o'clock, so. Good afternoon and welcome to the May meeting of the Knox County Commission. Thank you for joining us today. We will be moving quickly into our agenda, but before we do that, I would like to ask the county clerk's office to do a roll call so we know who all is here.
Commissioner Gill.
Present.
Commissioner Carringer. Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Nastrom.
Here.
Commissioner Skoomaker.
Here.
Commissioner Andrews.
Here.
Commissioner Bessler.
Here.
Commissioner Baylor.
Here.
Commissioner Daley.
Here.
Commissioner Jay.
Here.
Commissioner Biggs.
Present.
And Commissioner Carringer.
All right, I think Michelle's, did, uh... Commissioner Carringer here?
I have ten members present.
Okay. All right, well, we will move forward with our agenda. First is Commissioner Skoomaker, would you please lead us into tonight's devotional?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, on Memorial Day, we were unable to acknowledge our military heroes in proper fashion, so would you join me now in a Memorial Day prayer? Lord, on the day after Memorial Day, I am thankful for the sacrifice so many throughout our history have made, for the men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice, and for their families who had to carry on without them. Today, I remember a sacrifice made and a debt I cannot repay. Today, I pray for the God of heaven to bless the families of those who have lost loved ones while serving our great nation. I pray for him to bless and comfort the walking wounded who are still with us and bless their families as well. It is also my prayer that we remember their sacrifice and their precious gift of freedom every day, not just once a year or when we are in danger of it being taken away. We ask this in your loving name, amen.
Amen. Next, Commissioner Baylor, would you please lead us in a pledge?
I will indeed. Please stand and salute our nation's flag and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I know, before we jump into the agenda, I know shortly before the meeting, Commissioner Daley had mentioned to me that he wanted to recognize a World War II veteran.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Today, South Knoxville laid to rest a great man. Ninety-six-year-old Captain George L. Buchanan. Excuse me. Captain Buchanan flew on a B-24. He was a pilot on a B-24 during World War II, and he was successful in 28 missions. And I just want to say thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Daley. You know, I've got something else as well that I wanted to share briefly. My son, oh, gosh, about six or so weeks ago, wrote a note to Herschel Woody Williams. Woody is a Medal of Honor recipient and from World War II, who earned the Medal of Honor, serving in the Pacific Theater. Woody's low note, now I'm going to abridge it briefly, but he wrote our son back. It was very nice and unexpected, but he said, "Trace, thank you for your recent letter. Sorry I'm taking so long and getting back to you. I appreciate your thoughts about what you said in your letter, so true. You know, I, as well as you and so many others, are concerned about our country. We've not been more divided except for, in many cases, the Civil War. As terrible as this virus is, maybe, just maybe, it can bring us back together and cause the citizens of our country to again realize that without divine intervention, we can become a lost cause. We've already exceeded so many years that other folks have survived as a free people." It goes on a little bit, but, you know, then one thing that he says, you know, he talks about how they've been coping with the virus, and, you know, he closed his letter to my son with, "You know, I've been designated a hero many times since World War II, but in my mind, the heroes never got to come home. The rest of us were blessed with the opportunity of coming home to our loved ones, and I'm grateful to be one of those. My wife who lives in heaven had a saying that she would remind us of very often, 'Life is God's gift to us, and what we do with that life is our gift to God.'" So it was just a small world that this letter came to us right on the eve of Memorial Day, and I'm just glad that, you know, all of my fellow commissioners and, you know, our community really does appreciate what so many of our folks have done and have paid the supreme sacrifice. So, thank you. Now, we'll move on with our agenda. But first, as I always do, I wanted, I realize we do have some folks who may be tuning in to this meeting for the first time, and just, or you might have something you're watching, you may have come out, but let, you know, kind of how county commission meetings work. We have two meetings a month, two formal meetings. The first meeting is usually the third Monday of the month. The second meeting is usually the fourth meeting of the month, and because of Memorial Day yesterday, the May meeting is always, or historically, usually on that Tuesday every May. The first meeting is considered a work session. We've already had that work session meeting. We made our first pass through the agenda. We worked on things, debated things, discussed things, and a lot of the things that were debated and to certain extents passed already were put on something called a consent agenda. So tonight, you'll see a lengthy consent agenda from school-related activities, as well as a lengthy consent agenda from our general county business, and we, as a body, those items will be read into the record, and then we will have one vote for all of those items that have already been approved. You then, to our viewers, we will have a handful of items that have moved forward, either without a recommendation or maybe even been added tonight, that will then have a kind of a full debate and/or, you know, discuss and vote and pass or not pass at the meeting tonight. So last week's meeting was a work session. Tonight's meeting is the actual voting session, so I hope that helps explain everything. Moving forward, Driscilla, have we received any very recent comments in the last hour or so to public forum?
No, I've not received anything as of the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, okay, okay. And I'll look, I know we have several folks that have logged in. At last week's meeting, Mayor Jacobs gave us a really deep, detailed update on the Corona, a lot of the things the county was working on. I will allow Mayor Jacobs, if you've got any other updates or things you wanted to share with the commission tonight, if you, now's a good time to do so. If you've got any additional updates to share, but otherwise, we did not, I didn't have that on my agenda, and I hadn't heard from you, but I did want to give you that chance in case you did.
Sure, Commissioner. Probably the most important thing is today, Knox County moved in the face to of the reopening plan, which takes some further restrictions off of certain businesses and allows other businesses open. We also have our splash pads and our parks are now open as well some of our other facilities. Friday, we will be opening eight of our libraries. We talked with Maria Black from libraries, and they'd already developed a bit of a plan for what they thought would be appropriate for you as we ramp back up. So we're looking forward to that, too, and that's about all I can think of.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, moving on, for those who are watching, this is the part of the meeting where we actually formally vote on and set our agenda. I also want to, before we do that or conduct any formal business, I do want to remind the public that you may be wondering why we're doing this during Zoom, but this meeting is taking place electronically because of a public order that was passed by Governor Bill Lee, an executive order, it was Executive Order 16, and that executive order was actually extended recently to go through the end of June. So we are now meeting electronically because of that executive order. I would like, before we conduct any formal business, just to, as we did this during the, during the Bear Board meeting and actually during our Pension and Retirement Board meeting, I'd like to get a, I guess, votes on the record, or a motion to have this meeting electronically and have a quick roll call vote, subject to that. Get a, get a motion. I'll look to you, Commissioner Smith.
Motion that we conduct this meeting electronically according to the executive order issued by Governor Lee.
All right, thank you. And I saw Commissioner Daley raise his hand, so that'll be the second from Commissioner Daley. So, Madam Clerk, would you please do a roll call vote on that? May not have been anticipating this.
Commissioner Carringer.
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Hoping this is the last time I vote on this. Yes?
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nastrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nastrom votes aye. Commissioner Skoomaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Skoomaker votes aye. Commissioner Andrews?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrews votes aye. Commissioner Bessler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bessler votes aye. Commissioner Baylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Baylor votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. All members present voting aye.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll now move to setting our agenda. If you've got a copy of the agenda printed in front of you, or if you're watching it on another screen, if I missed something on this, please let me know so we can make sure that agenda is correct before we move into it. Item number forty-six is an item that we need to vote to formally add. Item forty-six to the agenda, that was the, actually, accepting the hand sanitizer from our friends at K-Tom, so that no one needs to be voted on as an add. We need to, when it's added, it will go, it'll stay on the consent agenda. The items that are being deferred are items eight, twenty-nine, forty-eight, forty-nine, for all deferrals, that's eight, twenty-nine, forty-eight, forty-nine. One item is being withdrawn, that's item forty. And on our non-consent agenda, items one, two, three, four, thirty-four, forty-one, and sixty. Did I miss anything, or is there any changes that y'all see? I'm looking over in our participant window. I'm not seeing any hands raised there, and I'm looking at the screen to see if there's any hands. Okay, can I get a motion to set the agenda?
Motion to set the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Baylor and a second from Commissioner Skoomaker to set tonight's agenda.
Kind of more.
Yeah. Go ahead, Commissioner Smith.
Mr. Chairman, I think you said item thirty-four. Did you say item thirty-five as on non-consent?
I said item thirty-four. May, I could have written it down wrong when I was pulling my list. Let me double-check here. You're right, you know, that is, well, on the list I've got, I'm showing item thirty-four, which was pulled from, that's on non-consent. That's the contract with Helen Ross McNabb. That was sent forward with no recommendation. That's what I've got written down. Did I say thirty-five? I know I wrote down thirty-four.
On my opinion, it's item thirty-five. Thirty-four is the Legacy Parks donation.
Mine's the same as the chairman's.
Yeah, mine is, too.
You may have printed out the work session agenda. Can you double-check and see if that's it, because this is the, the meeting agenda. They, sometimes they get moved around a little bit.
Yeah, and the work session, number thirty-five, is the behavioral health.
Okay, so we're on the same page. All right, Randy, are you good with that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, so, once again, non-consent, one, two, three, four, thirty-four, forty-one, sixty. Okay, and we had a motion, I believe it was from Baylor and Skoomaker, to set tonight's agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please call, do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nastrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nastrom votes aye. Commissioner Skoomaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Skoomaker votes aye. Commissioner Andrews?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrews votes aye. Commissioner Bessler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bessler votes aye. Commissioner Baylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Baylor votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. All members voting aye.
Thank you. All right, the agenda is set. As we move through the agenda, we do not have any honorary resolutions, and the first, next, first item we have is approval of minutes of the previous meeting. All right, that motion for approval from Commissioner Daley, is there a second?
Second, Carringer.
All right, we have a second from Commissioner Carringer. Okay, any discussion? No, okay. Roll call vote, all in favor?
Commissioner Nastrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nastrom votes aye. Commissioner Skoomaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Skoomaker votes aye. Commissioner Andrews?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrews votes aye. Commissioner Bessler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bessler votes aye. Commissioner Baylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Baylor votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. All members voting aye.
All right, thank you. The minutes are approved. Madam Clerk, next item, if it's roads.
Drives and roads, on page two. Consideration of the Acceptance of New County Roads. Yearling Road located in Hidden View Farms, Unit One, District W six. Colton Drive located in Hidden Valley Farms, Unit One and Two, District W six. Silver Spur Lane located in Hidden Valley Farms, Unit One, District W six. Golden Nugget Line located in Hidden Valley Farms, Unit Two, District W six. Penrose Terrace Line, Feather Rose Line, Flowering Peach Line, these are all located in Penrose Terrace, District W six.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. Was that you, Commissioner Baylor? I'm sorry, I was looking at my paper.
Andrews, I believe.
Andrews, okay, and the second from Commissioner Jay. Okay, all in favor, roll call vote?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think we need to say Hidden View Farms, not Hidden Valley Farms.
Okay, we will, for the record, the clerk referred to Hidden View Farms as Hidden Valley Farms, and that was how it was initially read into the record, but as chair, I'll read that in, in all cases, in items A, B, C, and D, and item one. Nice catch, Commissioner Skoomaker, where the word valley was used, it's actually to be view, for the record.
Sorry.
That's okay. They probably have some good ranch dressing here, too, so. Wasn't that the name of the ranch? Hidden Valley Ranch? Okay, sorry. The, okay, the, the mote, I'm getting, I'm growing weary from all these Zoom meetings, so that motion is properly before us, so Madam Clerk, if you could have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Skoomaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Skoomaker votes aye. Commissioner Andrews?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrews votes aye. Commissioner Bessler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bessler votes aye. Commissioner Baylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Baylor votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Aye.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nastrom?
Aye.
Mr. Nastrom votes aye. All members voting aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item?
This is consideration for closure of a portion of the right-of-way on Cadillac Drive, located at the corner of Cadillac Drive and Deville Way, totaling three hundred and sixty feet in length, at the request of Catherine Fuller. This is on second reading.
Okay, could I have a motion, please, for approval? It's on the second.
Motion to approve.
All right, the second, was that, who was the second from?
Bessler.
Charlie Bessler, okay. So that motion for the approval of disclosure has been made by Commissioner Andrews, the second by Commissioner Bessler. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, roll call vote?
Commissioner Andrews?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrews votes aye. Commissioner Bessler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bessler votes aye. Commissioner Baylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Baylor votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nastrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nastrom votes aye. Commissioner Skoomaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Skoomaker votes aye. All members voting aye.
All right, thank you. That passes. And Madam Clerk, next item, the line item transfers.
Motion for line item transfers.
Motion to approve line item transfers.
Okay, we have a motion for approval from Commissioner Skoomaker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Jay. Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Roll call vote?
Commissioner Bessler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bessler votes aye. Commissioner Baylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Baylor votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nastrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nastrom votes aye. Commissioner Skoomaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Skoomaker votes aye. Commissioner Andrews? Commissioner Andrews votes aye. All members present voting aye.
Okay, it passes. Thank you. Next item?
We have one hundred and eighteen notary applications.
Andrews, motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Andrews, the second, roll call, second from Commissioner Bessler, roll call vote for approval?
Commissioner Baylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Baylor votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nastrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nastrom votes aye. Commissioner Skoomaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Skoomaker votes aye. Commissioner Andrews?
Aye.
Commissioner Andrews votes aye. Commissioner Bessler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bessler votes aye. All members present voting aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, next item?
Spread of record for travel, Commissioners Gill, Carringer Nastrom, Skoomaker Andrews, Bessler Daley, and Biggs.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion for approval. I asked to spread a record. Do we need, don't need to vote on that one?
No.
Just part of the record. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item?
These are the education.
This is the.
Calendar.
Calendar, okay.
Consideration of a resolution of the Commission of Knox County, Tennessee, approving fiscal year two thousand and twenty budget line and transferring the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars within the capital plan fund, transferring the remaining balance from the completed Career and Technical Education Magnet High Construction Project account into the Fiscal Plan Upgrades Construction Project account. This is Resolution two zero one. Page three, Resolution two zero two is approving a fiscal year two thousand and twenty budget line item transfer within the capital plan in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, transferring funds from the Enskip Elementary School Building Construction Project account into the Land Acquisition Project account. Resolution two zero three is approving a fiscal year two thousand and twenty budget line and transfers within the capital plan in the amount of ten thousand dollars, transferring funds from the Fiscal Plan Upgrades Project account into the BEP Growth Account for Portable Classroom Projects. Resolution two zero five is approving an agreement with the Knoxville Knox County Community Action Committee for the Provision of Breakfast, Box Lunches, and Snacks by the Knox County Schools for the Summer Feeding Program for the period from May twenty-six, two thousand and twenty, through July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, which may be renewed annually up to four additional years with the necessary adjustments and upgrades. Resolution two zero six, approving a contract with Teleco Inc. for Public Safety Radio Benchmarking Services at a cost of seventy-two thousand dollars for the term of June first, two thousand and twenty, through May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, which may be extended for four additional years, one year at a time, for a total of five years. Resolution two zero seven is approving a contract with the National Institute of Excellence in Teaching for Evidence-Based Instruction Strategies Consulting for schools to utilize for professional development services for the term of June first, two thousand and twenty, through May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, which may be extended for additional two years, for a total of five years. Page four, Resolution two zero eight, is authorizing the acceptance of Title A, Title One, Neglected and Deliquent, Title Two A, Title Three, and Title Four, federal funding from the State of Tennessee Department of Education in the amount of eighteen million, nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars, seventy-five cents for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. Resolution two zero nine is authorizing the acceptance of the Individuals with Disability Education Grant Award from the Tennessee Department of Education for Special Education Services in the amount of thirteen million, eight hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars, IDEA Part B, and for Preschool Special Education Services in the amount of four hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars, IDEA Preschool for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. Resolution two ten is approving an amendment and restating memorandum of understanding with Simon Youth Foundation, Inc., regarding and continuing development and operation of Dr. Paul L. Kelly Volunteer Academy and receipt of grant funds in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. Resolution two eleven is approving a grant contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Education in provision of recruiting teachers, mentors, administration of required programming, and receipt of Mentors Matters Initials Grant in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars, no match required. Resolution two twelve is approving the Knox County Schools One Student Device Deployment Plan for grades K-12 for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year. And that's all of the education consent.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Biggs.
Amute yourself, Mr. Chairman.
Guilty. Yeah, we have a motion for approval that is properly before us. Madam Clerk, would you please call, do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Daley?
Yes.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nastrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nastrom votes aye. Commissioner Skoomaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Skoomaker votes aye. Commissioner? Commissioner Skumaker votes aye. Commissioner Andrews.
Aye.
Commissioner Andrews votes aye. Commissioner Bustler.
Aye.
Commissioner Bustler votes aye. Commissioner Baylor.
Aye.
Commissioner Baylor votes aye. All members present voting aye.
Very good. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you move us to the next item, please? I believe that's the General Government Consent Calendar?
Yes, starting on page five. Consideration of a resolution of the Commission of Knox County, Tennessee, accepting the resignation of Susan Swan, District Four seat, from the Knox County Library Advisory Board and appointing Amanda Rocliff to complete the unexpired term of Susan Swan on the Library Advisory Board. It's Resolution 110. Resolution 301 is approving a grant contract in the amount of $249,532.81 with the Tennessee Department of Human Services for Title IV, the Child Support Enforcement Services for the period beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021, requires a local match is $128,547.21. Resolution 302 is approving Amendment Number Eight to the lease with Samuel J. Furlough for space located at 1800 North Cherry Street for the Knox County Sheriff's Office Community Alternatives to Person Program, which amendment extends the lease for a period of one year beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021, with the monthly rental amount remaining at $4,245. Resolution 303 is approving contracts with airborne engines, LTD Standard Aereo, Inc., Thorbred Aviation Maintenance for helicopter engine repair and parts for the Knox County Sheriff's Office. Resolution 304 is approving a contract with Black Creek Integrated Systems for jail security upgrades for the Knox County Sheriff's Office. Resolution 401 is approving covenants for permanent maintenance of stormwater facilities and best management practices with premise land company for property located at Zero Oak Ridge Highway, CLT parcel number 091-02608. Page six. Is Resolution 402 approving covenants for permanent maintenance of stormwater facilities and best management practices with premise land company LLC for property located at Zero Creek Bend Lane, CLT parcel number 090-09101. Resolution 403 is approving covenants for permanent maintenance of stormwater facilities, best management practices with Locot Development LLC for property located at 7552 Chapman Highway, CLT parcel number 137-20605. Resolution 404 is approving covenants for permanent maintenance of stormwater facilities and best management practices with Locot Development LLC for property located at 125 Chapman Triangle Way, CLT parcel number 137-20603. Resolution 405 is approving covenants for permanent maintenance of stormwater facilities, best management practices with Mike Roper and Teresa Roper for property located at 2814 Bryant and Sawway Road, CLT parcel number 090-08704. Resolution 406 is approving covenants for permanent maintenance of stormwater facilities and best management practices with John C. Davenport of property located at 6944 Manorville Park, CLT parcel number 038-L8025. Resolution 407 is approving Amendment One to a contract with Tennessee Department of Transportation for improvements at the intersection of West Emory Road and Harold Road, Carpenter Road. Page seven. Resolution 601 is approving a grant contract in the amount not just $297,400 with the Tennessee Department of Health to provide high-impact area substance misuse response services for the period beginning December 1, 2019 and ending August 31, 2020, no local match required. 602 is approving Amendment One to a grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Health for the provision of immunization services for which amendments extend the term of the contract by one year to June 30, 2021 and increases the maximum liability of the state under the contract by $231,800, no local match required. 603 is authorizing the acceptance of a donation in the amount of $7,000 to Knox County Health Department for Knox Adolescent Pregnancy Prevention Initiative, Inc. for adolescent health training. Resolution 701 is approving a limited wanted day acceptance of property located on the Houston River at 1233 Old Strawberry Plant Pike, parcel number 053-012, and known as McBeefery Landing from the Legacy Parks Foundation to be used to create a new Knox County park. On page eight. Resolution 802 is approving an agreement of sale in the amount of $31,000 with Water Plant Road Holdings LLC for the sale of surplus real property located at Zero Island River Drive, CLT number 11100903. Resolution 803 is approving three grant contracts among the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation, the Knox County Railroad Authority, and the Knoxville and Houston River Railroad Company, Inc. for the provision of railroad track and bridge rehabilitation and approving a memorandum of understanding between the Knox County Railroad Authority and the Knoxville and Houston River Railroad Company, Inc. pursuant to which the Knoxville and Houston River Railroad Company, Inc. will pay the grantee match amounts required by the grant contracts. Resolution 804 is approving a formal internal service fund reserve policy. Resolution 901 is approving a contract with Pew and Company, P.C. for professional auditing services to perform a final in compliance audit for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020 of Knox County. Resolution 902 approving the lease agreement with Knoxville Juice Alliance, Inc. a nonprofit corporation organized under the laws of the State of Tennessee for the placement of a Master Sergeant Roddy Edmonds Memorial Marker and related improvements on the lease premises to the south of the intersection of Market Street and Clinch Avenue. Page nine. Resolution 905 is approving electronic recording trusted submitter agreement with Endocom Holdings, Inc. doing business as Endocom Global Service regarding the electronic recording of real property documents from the Knox County Register of Deeds Office. Resolution 906 is approving a grant contract in the amount of $255,000 with the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services for the operation of the Knox County Court and Knox County Veterans Treatment Court for the period beginning July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021, no local match required. Resolution 907 is an approving and increase in the compensation of election officers and workers on Election Day, budgetary impact yet to be determined. Resolution 908 is approving a grant contract in the amount of $10,000 with the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services for the continuation of a juvenile recovery court program, no local match required. This resolution was added. This is Resolution 909. It's a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a donation of 50 gallons of hand sanitizer from K-Tom Restaurant Supply.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Smith. I make a motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Andrews.
I'll tear myself off. We have a motion from Commissioner Smith and a second from Commissioner Andrews to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, Madam Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner Jay.
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. Commissioner Biggs.
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer.
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nastrom.
Aye.
Commissioner Nastrom votes aye. Commissioner Skumaker.
Aye.
Commissioner Skumaker votes aye. Commissioner Andrews.
Aye.
Commissioner Andrews votes aye. Commissioner Bustler.
Aye.
Commissioner Bustler votes aye. Commissioner Baylor.
Aye.
Commissioner Baylor votes aye. Commissioner Daley.
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. All members present voting aye.
Alright, thank you. It passes. Alright, Madam Clerk, next item.
This is item 147. This is a presentation of a proclamation by the Knox County Mayor proclaiming April 2020 as Fair Housing Month in Knox County.
I think, did we move that?
Move that back.
Did we move that one off of the work session? Or was that, was that pulled off of there at the, at the work session to move forward to either to June?
I believe Mr. Vandebay wanted us to go ahead and gut on that, did he not?
Okay.
Yes.
Are we, are we on the right item?
Yeah, that, that's what I'm, that's why, thank you. That's exactly what I, exactly, because she called, I'm looking at mine that I printed off, unless the agenda got updated. You said item 47, and the agenda that I've got goes through 46, which I think I just put it up, printed off of Agenda Quick.
It's in the other business, and they moved it for their grant application.
Okay, got it.
We should be on item 34.
Yeah.
On page eight, item number 34.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's where we're on. We should be on item 34. That's, that's where we're at.
Consideration of a resolution of the Commission of Knox County, Tennessee, approving extension one to Divine Services Contract among Knox County, Tennessee, and the Helen Ross McNabb Center, Inc. for services related to the Behavioral Health Urgent Care Center. Resolution 801.
There we go. Thank you. Alright, could I have a motion for this item?
Motion to approve, Commissioner Andrews.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for approval from Commissioner Andrews and a second from Commissioner Gill for discussion. I'm calling on Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I see Houston and Leanne and, and Jason, you're all there. Get in there, Jason. First, I want to thank you guys for the time you spent with me this week going over this. I want to let everybody know that I'm not some heartless guy that doesn't want to help people. I just want to make sure we're getting the best we can for those that need help and the best we can for our taxpayers. I, you, you've given me a lot of information, but I did still have a few questions, if that would be okay with you all.
Absolutely.
First, you explained the, the fact program to me, that that's the community program. Are those mainly people that are currently in the detention facility?
This is Leanne from the Helen Ross McNabb Center. Commissioner, the individuals in the fact program are individuals who have been diverted from jail and come through the drop-off portion of the program, and then all of them are assessed and offered the community-based component of the fact program. So that's their admittance into the, the program. We have a very, very small avenue to get in directly from jail, but there's only been about 8% of the individuals who've come from jail to the, the fact community-based program.
Then, then what is exactly the difference between the facts and, and the just drop-off? You have that broke down in, in the information you've given me?
That's great, that's a great question. So one of the things that we wanted to keep from the original design was a 24/7/365 facility that law enforcement could utilize to drop off any individual who they're encountered with that has a mental illness and one of the nine misdemeanor charges. So it's a firehouse model. Law enforcement officers can drop them off at any time. What we really heard from Commission last year was that we did not have as much of a community-based component. We sent individuals out for follow-up appointments and other places for, for discharge appointments, but we ourselves through the program didn't have a community-based program. So when we looked at the data from, this was a year ago, we reduced our drop-off utilization while we increased the community base and created that fact program. So does that help answer that question? It's all of the services there are offered in the community, making sure they get gase management appointments, making sure the individual's behavioral health needs are met, making sure they got medication provided in the own individual's environment, and the average length of stay roughly for the program is 3.5 months. And the ultimate goal would be to, to step them down into a lesser intensive service.
And by stay, I would interpret that to mean treatment, treatment time, received treatment?
Yes.
And 90? I'm sorry, go ahead, Leanne.
I was going to say, this is a, this is a level of care that didn't currently exist in our community.
And 94% of the drop-offs to the site are actually done by the, the Knoxville City Police Department?
That is correct.
You guys are providing all of the, all of the community-based services yourself. You're not subbing that out to anybody or assigning somebody the casework. It's all your, all's case, caseload.
That is correct.
How, how many case managers do you have dedicated to this program?
So for the community-based element, we have five. We have a few in the drop-off component that does a lot of the discharge planning, but we have five that carry the caseloads to go out into the community.
Okay, and two there that work the, the period of time they're there for the 24 hours. I guess that's what you're saying.
Could you repeat that for me?
You, you have five that work in the community-based program out in the community, and then two that are there at the center for the people during the 24 hours that they are.
That is correct, with the additional medical staff.
And according to your outpatient treatments, 68% of the people go to follow-up treatments?
They do. So that is the, one of the outcomes that we measured from the very beginning of the program. So that measures from everybody who comes to the drop-off center, whether they kept their initial follow-up appointment.
Is it just a follow-up, or is it like we asked last time, do we? And, and you provided that information, I guess, in order to get the average of 10 community-based services over a month, over three and a half months' average time of treatment?
So the 68% is looking at all of the individuals served in the program, and did they keep that initial follow-up appointment? The 10 visits per month is pulled from all of our community-based data provided for individuals in our program.
Okay, um, I know you've only had this program running a year. I had asked Jay for, Jason, for a copy of the budget. I, you know, on our website is the 2018-19 budget. That was back when your program was much different. And, and I wasn't able to get, when do you think you'll have that?
Hey, Commissioner Smith, you, yeah, I'll had another meeting at four today when you find, when we said program. Someone send that to you after we're done.
Alright, thank you, sir.
No problem.
Leanne?
Yes, sir.
I think we all agree that this is just the tip of the iceberg of what we actually need to be doing to, to help people in our society. What is there that you think we could do to improve and make this even better?
Well, you know, as we talked the other day, I think I'm, I'm someone who's always looking for improvements. I think our organization's always looking for continual improvements. I know that this is a very challenging and unique segment of our population. And we're talking about individuals who, when we first opened this program, we thought we would know most of the individuals that we would see coming through our door, and to our surprise, we didn't. I think it's a, it's a group of individuals that, and to our surprise, we didn't. I think it's a, it's a group of individuals that, um, for a lack of a better description, are hidden from services, and we, and we don't, we aren't able to, um, do a very good job accessing them in the past in treatment. So we've, we're, it's a very difficult-to-engage population. I think housing is always going to be a continual challenge for us. I think continuing to, um, build trust and, and, you know, I think that happens with intensive services. I think, so this is a, you know, it's a, it's a program that's intensive by design. It's a program that's evidence-based by design, and I think it's because of the very difficult, um, population that we're trying to reach.
With funding, funding notwithstanding, do you think this program works better than the original programming?
You know, I think what we've done is added a community element. So we didn't really, um, lose anything that I didn't think that, that, that we had to have. So, so the, what we, what we downsized is the three-day stay at the observation unit. And I've been happily surprised that we've been able, I feel, to continue to stabilize people within that twenty-three hours. Um, and I think the staff have worked really hard to do that. Um, and then I think adding the community-based element has strengthened the program. I do.
I, 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 I fully believe that the community-based program and the follow-up is, 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 is a, is a lot better way to go. Uh, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, twenty-four hours is time to stabilize somebody and that we didn't need to go looking to go back to the seventy-two.
And, and Commissioner, we're very, you know, we are extremely, uh, creative bunch, and we want our staff to, uh, feel the need to meet the needs of an individual in front of us. So we have at times extended that if need be, or, um, done whatever we need to do to get them into additional, more like residential services or things like that on occasion if need be. They've done an excellent job. I'm proud of all of them.
Okay. Moving forward, could you provide us with quarterly reports? Uh, that would be very helpful, uh, especially as we go into the second year of this, this format and programming.
We can. Um, do we want to know how? Is there a, is there, if you will, after the meeting, if we can find the best, you know, the wa- route to make sure that you all get that on a quarterly basis, we will absolutely do that.
You can just send it to, uh, to, to the Commission email drill, distribute it.
You got that. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank, thank you.
Okay, we have a, uh, follow-up, uh, from Commissioner Gill.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was, I'm still a little confused on how many people we are serving and at what cost.
You want, you want to answer that? I can, or you can?
Go ahead.
You want me to? Okay, Commissioner, I'll, I'll take that one. Uh, Jason's here if we need to. So you ask how many people we are serving and to what cost?
Yes.
We serve approximately five hundred individuals every year. So we're in our second year. We exceeded that last year. We are on target to see, uh, that same number this year. Through quarter three, we have served three hundred and seventy-three individuals. We look at a daily rate on the cost of that, and we come up with thirty-one dollars and seventy-three cents. And the way we come up with that is the, um,
Average.
Jason's trying to. It's the average of the quarter for what we get from you all, and we, for the program. And then we divide that by the number of individuals served in the program through that quarter, and we divide that by the number of treatment days available. And it is a twenty-four, seven model. So that's how we come up with that figure, which is, um, which is significantly less than an average jail day stay. I will say that a hundred percent of the individuals have, um, immediate access to mental health treatment and have, a hundred percent have been diverted from jail.
Okay. And my follow-up question is, do we, do we track by zip code the population of people you serve or other demographics that will determine where our point of service area, uh, is and could be strengthened?
Oh, that's a great question. So we gather that information on intake. Um, I have not pulled it by zip code, but that's something we could do. We have that information.
Yeah, and the reason I was asking that question is, I mean, obviously in the middle of a pandemic, are we faced with, uh, people who have higher particular stressors? Or, and if we needed to target our case manager associated with that? Or have we looked to add additional supports because of the mental health challenges that we're, we're in the middle of? So I just wanted to make sure, I, uh, I acknowledge that, uh, some of the additional stressors are present now, and if, if we're looking to, uh, provide additional resources in that direction.
I, I would like to answer that question if I can from the organization's perspective. Um, so, um, a little separate from this contract, we do provide the, um, Crisis Stabilization Unit and the Mobile Crisis Unit for this area. Uh, and we really wanted to enhance our call line, so we implemented a little bit, um, additional follow-up for callers. If, um, somebody was calling in need or something like that, we wanted to make sure we provided a call within a week or follow-up to that, um, just to make sure people got a little extra support right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, uh, thank you, Commissioner Gill. Commissioner Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you, you, earlier, uh, when talking to Commissioner Smith, you, you said that a, a rather large, if not almost entire, uh, percentage of the use of this program is from the city of Knoxville Police Department. Uh, has training, information sharing, and, um, introductions of all of these programs been, uh, given to the county sheriff's department?
Uh, yes, sir. So we meet on, um, a, a monthly basis with representatives from both the Knoxville Sheriff's, uh, the Knoxville County Sheriff's Office and, uh, the police department. And I will say that that is an increase from last year. So that's positive to see. And, um, we review, um, every month how we can increase that number, uh, but I do think there is more to be done. So, um, we could do more training. We have trained everyone on their shift, but, um, we could certainly do that again and see if that, um, couldn't increase utilization in that way.
Are you able to tell, um, if the population that's being served by your programs, I mean, do they inherently come within, come from within the city limits? Or are they, uh, is there a group of people outside of the city limits that are, you feel like are just not finding their, their way here, or is, or is there, is there a way to know that?
You know, I don't know. So, um, here, I'm just gonna say, you know, they're, they're being brought to us by the police department. So I'm making some assumptions that they're in that, um, area to be arrested. Um, but we haven't looked at their, um, zip code, as Commissioner Gill mentioned, about where they're, um, where they would consider identifying as their home.
Okay, thank you.
So that's something we could look at.
Yeah, I think it's worth trying to understand, and, and I appreciate that there's a lot of education going on on the county side as well as the city to get people more engaged and understanding what this resource is, um, available to, to use. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Daley, and then I might have a quick follow-up.
What is the cities portion is my only question of this budget?
Uh, I was jumping in there. Jason's pushing me forward. Hello, everyone. Uh, last Tuesday, uh, Knoxville City Council unanimously approved, uh, their portion of this contract extension. It's probably worth mentioning that this is a single contract with the city and with Helen Ross McNabb, uh, with the county. And that total dollar amount was for four hundred and seventy, I was sorry, five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
All right, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Skinmaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To follow up on, uh, Commissioner Daley's, uh, comment, uh, so the city is kicking in forty percent, and we're kicking in sixty percent. Why was it not a fifty-fifty, uh, proposition for both governmental bodies?
I would love to answer that for you, Commissioner, but that would be between, uh, the county finance director and the city finance director.
I, I think I can answer that. Um, the, the, the premise and thought was it would save the county money on jail days in, in the detention facility.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Skinmaker, any follow-up, or any follow-up from Commissioner Smith?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Well, Leanne, you know I don't like that thirty-one dollars a day, how it breaks down, 'cause it makes some assumptions. Uh, I'm a bean counter, so I'm gonna just break this into uh, a very simple way so that people can get an idea of the program. With the city and the county combined, it's a one point four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year program. If you divide that by the average number of patients a year of five hundred, it comes out to about twenty-eight hundred and thirty dollars per person served. Uh, and if you do that by day count, it costs the, the program thirty-eight hundred and seventy-six dollars a day to operate.
Thank you. Uh, hey, I've got one, uh, Commissioner Smith, your, your light's still on. And I don't know, Houston, if y'all want to respond to that, or, I mean, that, that, those numbers appear to be what they are.
I'll, I'll take the first stab at answering that. Um, I think that, um, what I would say, um, about these programs are that they are twenty-four, seven. So, uh, I think it's important to remember that in order for law enforcement, um, to feel like they can drop off, we have to make sure that we make it for them where it's least amount of barriers. So we are open twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. They can bring an individual in at any time. So we are housing that three six, we are staffing that through sixty-five. And firehouse models, um, are a set cost, and we have the beds for that. So the fact, community-based portion is also a twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five model due to us wanting to make sure we got an evidence-based practice model for this population, which really means you have to have people available twenty-four, seven for the person. So it, we, it, we real, it's hard to look at that based like on a fee-for-service model. So it's important that in order for us to be successful, if, if we want to go back to designing a program that can be successful with the individuals that we're working with, we have got to be available when they need it. And when they need it is when they're in front of a police officer, when they're at risk of going to the emergency department, when they're having issues in the community, and we need a place for them to be extracted to, um, or out of a situation. So I think that's, I would just, I would just, does, I would just like to describe that as, as what the level of programming that we're offering for the population.
Any other follow-up? All right, I'll, uh, Commissioner Biggs?
Uh, thank you, Chairman Nastrom. Uh, my question's actually for Commissioner Smith. Given some of the things he was talking about and the data he was providing and the facts and figures, is he suggesting we kind of pull out of this program? Or pull back on some of our funds, or what would he like to see that's not there, or things of that nature?
Um, Mr. Biggs, Commissioner Biggs, no, that's, that's not what I'm suggesting. I am just, uh, this is a, you know, a, it was a pilot program. It ran a year the way we kind of envisioned it would. State throws us curveball. We're having to run it another way. I'm just trying to get a good knowledge of it. Uh, I don't think you pull the plug on anything after one year. Uh, I, I think, you know, I honestly think they're trying and doing a good job. It's a really tough job. Uh, I'm just trying to make sure that this is working the best that it can, and trying to let everybody realize how hard this is and how much more effort we need to start putting into these kind of things. But I did have, uh, well, I'm.
You actually had your hand up. You want to just, just finish your question, and then I'll, I'll move. I know Commissioner Jay wanted to, to have a follow-up as well, and I might too.
Okay, and I did want to ask about the facility itself. I know it's a ten thousand square foot facility. I know we're down to six beds there, and that we have, uh, uh, we have some medical staff there, and it sounds like we have maybe two to, two in-house and five uh, off-premises counselors, master, uh, counselors, I believe you called them. What type of space in that facility is dedicated to this portion of the program?
Commissioner Smith, we can get that exact number. My guess is about forty percent of that square footage at least is specific to the site. If you add in the break room and the intake center, just all the aspects that are dedicated to the BHUC, I'd say it's north of forty percent.
Okay, and, and none of the space has been lost to the expansion of the crisis stabilization yet, has it?
No, sir.
That's it from me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, guys.
Good. Okay, uh, Commissioner Jay, I've just got a quick, quick, I'll get, I know you'd already had, had gone already. Uh, I know when we were evaluating and planning on moving into this space, and there, we looked at programs all around the country trying to figure out who was getting the best outcomes. I remember, I think, we're studying a program in Arizona, or, or, oh, I mean, there was a whole bunch of different, uh, uh, program models. Uh, you know, I, I guess I'm curious, are, are we hearing from anybody outside of our market asking us about what we're doing? And when you guys are networking within this space, talking about the outcomes that you're getting and, uh, the investment in it, can you just give me a, a, a quick recap on, how are we doing? It's hard to compare to our peers, 'cause I get, there's probably very different programs that are being done differently. And I don't want this to go on for too long, but if, so if you could just kind of very, be brief on this.
Um, I'll answer that one, sir. Yes, um, we are. So when you look across the state of Tennessee, we are part of a diversion group that re- meet regularly, and they're all a little different. I would say ours is a very true, uh, jail diversion. So these aren't individuals who are at risk of going to jail, or, um, if services aren't provided, they may go to jail. They are on their way to jail. Um, so I think that makes our community really unique, because it has to be a good relationship from your mental health provider, your law enforcement providers, uh, your district attorney's office, all having to work really closely together. So I'm proud of that. And I think other communities don't necessarily see that as well. We have been on webinars for, um, some federal agencies. So for SAMSA, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Agency, has our staff regularly on webinars to teach other communities about this model and what's been working, um, our challenges, you know, our redesign, um, being, being very interested. What I hear is, um, they're very envious of what we've been able to do in our community. Um, and there are other models across the state are looking to do this. Uh, our CEO and I went to a, a complex care conference this year to talk about this model, um, on a panel with people from New York, um, wanting to know, you know, how we've been successful with the, with the true jail diversion piece. They are very interested in us in establishing the community-based component. Um, many of them don't have that component to it, so that's been interesting. Um, so we've gotten a lot of, of, of attention and press across the country, um, that are very interested in watching for what our outcomes are gonna be.
Is it, uh, as someone who did spend some time in the social work sphere, I guess, is it too early to really have a whole lot of data to do a, a real outcome model, where you've got, say, a control group or anything? I mean, it's gotta be difficult, uh, especially with the change in the program. I, I, when we look back on this in a year or so, I, I guess it'll, I want to find out kind of, yeah, I won't be on this body anymore, but I, I guess we want to, you know, keep your message real simple in terms of the outcomes. It's, it's also difficult, I realize right now, our jail population has dropped, and that, that, normally you would say, well, here's one of the outcomes that we've gotten, you know? How much of the, uh, jail population drop has been contributed by your program and some of the other, uh, factors? So I, I guess that's some data. I don't expect you to have it. You, you probably don't, but as we begin to move forward, uh, that, that could be some relevant and interesting data to see how, how the program contributed to, to drop in population.
And I, I, I thank you. And, and I would also say, what I think could be very interesting for us to look at, it's the number of jail bed days prior to the program and post. So even if we've been able to, um, not have an individual return to jail six months post-discharge, it really doesn't paint the picture of how many jail bed days they had the year prior and the year post. We've had some individuals with up to thirty-day, thirty arrests in a previous year.
Okay. All right, uh, Commissioner Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just had a question. Do we have, uh, do we know if, I, I, I don't believe I've ever heard of a program like this in any of our surrounding counties. Is that accurate?
I don't think so.
The, the closest that we operate, Commissioner, is our early release program for women that are coming out of the Hamblin County Jail in Moorestown.
Okay.
Very successful program, but it's not a diversion. It's an early release program.
I, I guess my question is, are other, are residents from other counties being brought or participating in this program, and are we receiving any support from our surrounding counties? If this is sort of a regional, a model or regional hub? Or, or is it a regional model or hub, or is it truly Knox County only who, that is using it?
It is truly Knox County only.
Okay, all right. So that's one of the sort of program qualifications, so to speak. We're not having people brought in from other surrounding counties.
No, we are not.
Okay, thank you. That's good information. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, is there, are there any other questions or follow-up on this one? Okay, not seeing any. All right, the, uh, motion is properly before us. I believe the motion was made by Commissioner Anders with the second by Commissioner Gill, uh, if, if that's correct. So all in favor, please say aye via a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Biggs.
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nastrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nastrom votes aye. Commissioner Skidmaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Skidmaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bessler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bessler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. All members present voting aye.
All right. Thank you. It passes. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
On page nine, item number 41. Consideration of a resolution of the commission declaring Knox County, Tennessee a Second Amendment constitutional county. This is resolution 904.
Okay, thank you. Could I get a motion prior to discussion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have, uh, from the original makers of this one, we have a motion for approval from Commissioner Daley and a second from Commissioner Beeler. With Commissioner Anders has got his light on. Commissioner Anders, you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, I expressed my concerns about an amendment that's, you know, we, the law director says this is a political statement. The makers of the motion have both said it has no teeth, it has no justification as law. Had a few constituents email me and say, this is not a matter for county commission. They, we're going through the biggest financial struggle of our generation and we're worried about making a group of people whom I agree with happy. And then, you know, last, last week, the, the makers of the motion, the sponsors of the motion, you know, said, this is about, you swore an oath to uphold the constitution of the country, of federal constitution, the state constitution and the county charter. And, you know, we sat in the last beer board meeting and the two makers of the motion refused to vote on a lawful beer permit because they don't believe in it. And so when another commissioner brings another topic that is law that you don't agree with as a maker of the motion, or as, as being divisive, I mean, we're, we're creating divisive issues at a time where we need to be together on everything. And I just, I mean, I'll, I'll vote for it in support of it because I support the Second Amendment. But this kind of activism and this kind of thing is what got us previous to 2008 on our county commission, fighting each other and the unprofessionalism that we saw there. And, and although the hearts, hearts rot, the intents rot. I mean, if you don't believe in the county charter and the beer laws and you can't vote for those, then don't sit here and say, you guys need to uphold the constitution of the federal constitution and amendments. I just think it's a set in a bad precedent. It's unnecessary. The county can't do anything to the federal government. They won't do anything to the federal government, nor the state government. And so it's just divisive to stuff that, and I agree with the content of the, of the thing. But it has no political, or it has no bearing on how we function as a county. And if you can't vote for the charter of Knox County as, as small as something as a beer permit because you don't believe in it, then when another commissioner brings abortion or, or gay marriage in a resolution supporting it as law of the country, which it is, don't, you know, don't defer on that. So I just, I think the message that we're sending is, is unnecessary. It has no bearing and it's a political statement. It's, it's unfortunate that we went down this path.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Anders. Next, Commissioner Gill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And considering I was the only commissioner to vote against this, this is a political move. And unfortunately, in the middle of a pandemic, we understand that there was lots of opposition sent by email. And I want to acknowledge and make sure we understand that there was opposition to this and, and that the federal government and the state and local government should be, one, because we, because obviously if you, you understood and read the constitution, we, we would not even be in this, in this position. And that I think that the public would like to see us deal with lots of issues in the county that are present now and forthcoming versus a resolution that is looking at making this a Second Amendment county. It is, it is just simply unnecessary. And I just want to make sure the voice of the people who spoke against this be acknowledged. And when I first started, I had another commissioner tell me to stay in my lane when I wanted to support all of the employees that were being furloughed at the University of Tennessee. And I think part of the message that is missing because we are on Zoom is the public telling us to stay in our lane. And I want to make sure that, that this is an unnecessary resolution, considering some of the level of unprofessionalism that has been hurled at me, that we need to acknowledge this is not where we need to be. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Gill. Commissioner Jay? All right, sorry, Commissioner Jay, check the mic.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you'll permit, I just, I put together a statement. I just wanted to sort of gather my thoughts together, if you'll allow me a minute to read that.
Sure.
I've spent a lot of time researching and reading about this movement and to have counties like ours declare themselves a Second Amendment sanctuary county. I've also received equal numbers of responses from constituents supporting and opposing this. In full disclosure, I am a gun owner, an avid bird hunter and a law-abiding citizen. I've never felt like my right to bear arms has ever been threatened. In my research about the 2A movement, it seems to me the controlling rule of law is clear and not in dispute. In Heller 554, US 570 from 2008, the Supreme Court held that the Second Amendment protects an individual right to possess a firearm unconnected with service in a militia and to use that arm for traditionally lawful purpose such as self-defense within the home. Last week, Commissioner Beeler stated, this is a resolution, this resolution is a statement that we don't welcome any laws that would change the Second Amendment. A governing body may not welcome new gun laws, but any federal or state law that is passed would require us to enforce it. In Tennessee Code Annotated Section 39171314, the state legislature very clearly preempts any local regulation of firearms and ammunition in our state. Knox County does not have the authority to enact any local regulations on firearms. So whether it's on a federal or state level, courts have the power to declare a law unconstitutional, not local leaders. Interpreting the constitution is not in a local official's responsibility or within our power. However, here we are as the body of Knox County Commission looking to adopt a resolution affirming our belief in the Second Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. I went back and listened to the commission work session and last week's debate on this resolution. Here are some of the statements that were presented. Commissioner Daley stated, this is not a problem solver at all. This is just a statement. This resolution has no teeth related to any law. It's not going to change any laws or change anything. Our law director, Bud Armstrong, said, federal law dictates all gun laws other than carry permits which are governed by the state. We don't have any regulatory rights on a local level to, related to guns. It's a political statement more than a legal statement. We don't have any jurisdiction at all. We are saying we support the federal law and the state law as written. When I took the oath of office, I swore that I would support, obey and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state of Tennessee and the Charter of Knox County, Tennessee. And I would faithfully discharge the duties of my office to the best of my ability. I didn't swear to uphold some of them or the ones I agree with, but all of them equally. And I take that very seriously. I take very seriously the rule of law and I really don't believe that we should show favoritism based on politics. Last week, Commissioner Daley stated, the law department has spent hours on this resolution. By that statement, it's clear that Knox County has already spent real money on an exercise that has no legal merit, solves no problems and affirms something we already do. I hope this isn't the beginning of a trend where we continue to spend more taxpayer funds on singling out items we already attest to. Commissioner Bussler stated, people want to know where you stand. That's a fair statement. So I want to be very clear to the constituents across Knox County. I believe that as one of the founding documents of our great nation, the United States Constitution is sacred to us as Americans. And I consider it an honor to take the oath, oath to uphold the entire constitution as I work to fulfill my duties as a Knox County commissioner. I believe in the Second Amendment as I believe in all parts of the constitution, articles one through seven and amendments one through 27. I believe in the Bill of Rights and I believe in the rule of law. I simply don't want to single out one amendment from the entire constitution and label it the single most important issue. If this resolution, by admissions from its sponsors, has no legal merit and solves no problems, its only person, purpose can be political by nature. Citing how many other counties across Tennessee have adopted something similar, seems to insinuate this is more about political peer pressure than practical po, problem solving. During this process, even, I even had one of my colleagues tell me if I ever wanted to be elected again, I'd have to vote for it. Really? Is that what our public service and political atmosphere has come to? I don't want to disparage my colleagues or the sponsors of this resolution. You are all passionate people who deeply held beliefs and I trust you're coming at this with honest intentions. I also believe, Mr. Chairman, that every member of this body views their service to our country and our community as an honor, just as I do. However, I'd like to see this body take action on things that solve problems and spend our time to bring Knox County together, not find ways to polarize and divide us. We are in the middle of a global pandemic. People are dying across our country. Knox County is struggling financially. Our neighbors are unemployed and struggling to keep their businesses alive and some are even going hungry tonight. If we spent more time focusing on those vital issues, everyone would be better off. This resolution is, in my opinion, unnecessary, but it's not necessarily wrong. I don't have any reason to vote against it. I do believe in the Second Amendment, but I don't believe it's right to single out one part of our constitution. Our job is to govern, not just to get reelected. So when we begin voting on things simply to be reelected or for fear of retribution by certain groups, we've stopped serving the people of Knox County. All that being said, I think adopting resolutions like this set a bad precedence, so I will politely pass on voting for it. Thank you for the time.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner Jay. Mr. Beeler?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect to my colleagues, as one of the sponsors of this resolution and as the, one of the makers of the motion, I would prefer to speak last, unless my co-sponsor would prefer that.
Okay. All right. Well, we can, uh, okay, I'll call Commissioner Bussler.
I appreciate the information that we got about these different laws and things that we have throughout our state here in the constitution. However, I have a motor home and when I'm traveling in that motor home, I always carry some protection and I have, I am licensed to carry. I've got my own carry permit. But there are certain states that you go into that you have to call and register. If you're caught with that, it's a felony in their state to have a, carrying a gun, even though you've got a carry permit in the state of Tennessee. Now, laws change from each state. You go into Chicago or the city of New York, even though you've got a carry permit and you let them know that you have a carry permit, you still can be arrested and charged for carrying a gun in those other states. And it just depends upon who's in office and in the state and in the, in that state of how things are litigated. So I see both sides of the story. But if it was legal under this constitution, we should be able to have a carry permit that's good for the whole United States, but it's not. Because each people limits your constitutional rights. California, New York, Illinois and these others that you have to let them know that you've got a gun on your carry and you've got to have it locked up when you go in there. So, yeah, I could see, you know, we have a constitution, but we're not all equal in every state to carry that gun, even though you may have a permit to carry it. So one way or the other, you're going to have to make a statement, hey, we believe in it and we're going to have it free and open for everybody to carry and to protect themselves from an overbearing government. So, look at the rest of the state, what they do. So that's all I've got to say about it. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Commissioner Bussler. Commissioner Skidmaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate Commissioner Daley sending us the information about the other counties in Tennessee. And I took a look at the, uh, document that Commissioner Daley sent us. And I noticed that for the Eastern Grand Division of Tennessee, which is the 33 counties in East Tennessee, 25 of the county commissions out of the 33 have already passed a resolution similar to this. So basically, 75% of our neighboring counties have passed this, uh, this resolution. So it tells me too that the law directors in those 25 counties have also previewed this, this type of a resolution and have approved it and our colleagues have as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Skidmaker. Commissioner Daley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too have got some phone calls and some emails from constituents, but most of them, I will say the vast majority of them are for this 2A. And this is, uh, I've been called a few names, which is fine. I mean, that's, that's what you want to do. You can call me names or you can do whatever you want to call, do. But this is not a political grandstand. This was some citizens that came to me and asked me if I would sponsor this. I believe in the Second Amendment and to do this, I asked the law department, the law department looked at this, the law department, and I said hours, the law department didn't spend hours on that one, you know? The most important thing is that we are a nation of rules and laws. And I understand that, you know, I'm picking the 2A because our, we're requested to. And I am going to vote for it. It's, it's up to you. If you don't want to vote for it, don't vote for it. It's, uh, it's something that I feel that was brought before my attention back in January or February, I believe. And we could have heard it then, but we postponed it for 30 days or 60 days. So I, I see nothing wrong. We're supporting the Second Amendment as a Knox Countyan and I will vote to support that Knox County 2A amendment. And thank you, Commissioner Beeler, for signing on to that, uh, this resolution and, you know, be what it is, you know, you can, you can say I'm grandstanding, you can say that it's not, not necessary, but that's, that's your opinion. But, you know, I'm, I was done what I was asked to do. It's something that I believe in. And so thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Beeler, for help supporting this.
Okay. Thanks, Commissioner Daley. Commissioner Anders, I see your light's still on. I'd like to give you another second to weigh in here. Okay, you're just turning your light off. Uh, yeah, I'll be clear. I've kind of been on this struggle bus on this one. I, I remember when we talked about it at the work session last week, uh, my friend Commissioner Beeler had said, you know, you know, he's a preacher, you know, he, he really, I don't even know if he owned a gun or been that active in it, but found himself as a co-sponsor of this one. When, you know, I'm, I'm frankly just the opposite, you know, when I'm not fishing, you know, this is one of my hobbies and I like to collect and shoot and bird hunt and I've got trophies. You can't see them, but there's some trophies up there for my, for some success in that one. But, you know, where, what's made me struggle on this one is just the whole classic staying in your lanes and getting involved in federal issues at the, the county level. That's what has made this, you know, not the seeming no-brainer that it, that it is. And much like Commissioner Daley, I'd had a lot of citizens had approached me earlier in the year and said, hey, can you do this? I said, guys, uh, so I said, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm busy as chairman. I'm focusing on the budget and prefer, you know, that's more of a federal issue than a, a local issue, although I have been, uh, for a number of months just kind of following how it's been hitting in some of the other, uh, counties around here. As, as you look at the law, you know, as I mentioned somewhat tongue-in-cheek at the work session, it was an awfully long resolution. The, you know, the, the most important case in that is the Heller case. I think Mr. Jay had mentioned that, uh, which, which you're kind of validated it, it. And where I, I guess I've also struggled is, you know, where we're talking about budgetary stuff in a document that is mentioned as a, primarily an honorary resolution, you know? So I guess, you know, where I've struggled most is, do you vote, you know, I'd have a hard time voting against it. You know, I don't know that I could, but where I would, would struggle is, do I pass on the vote? You know, I'm, I'm still, you know, it, that's what I've really been struggling a lot on is just because I've always tried to keep our meetings simple, clean and not get too, too deeply involved in, uh, federal issues here locally. So, uh, those are some of my general thoughts and believe me, I've been more involved in, in the, the community and supported this than, than many of us. Just because it's, it's been a competitive thing for me. So, you know, with, with that said, I wanted to give some of the other commissioners a chance to, to weigh in on it. And I'd sometime not see any other lights, so I could probably hand it over to, unless some of the other commissioners wanted to speak, hand it back to, okay, Smith. Go ahead, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I've struggled with this too, because I am a supporter of gun, guns, gun owners' rights and the right to bear arms. I, I along with you have a problem when it gets into budgetary questions and a problem where we start to make things that we have no control over, local divisions, things that divide people in our community when it really is for no reason, because it, it has no teeth and means nothing. You know, I struggle with do I pass, do I vote for this? You know, I feel like I have to vote for it. It's like anything that's the law of our land, part of our charter, part of our state constitution. I feel like I have to vote for it. I'm wondering if there's any other, anything we can do to shorten this, to make it less complicated. That is one long resolution. If there's anything we can do to simplify it, and again, I, I really don't like things that don't come, that, that come before us that we really have no control over. And everybody's used this phrase a lot tonight. I remember my good friend Sam McKenzie telling us this all the time when he was on commission, stay in your lane.
Okay. Well, I can't guarantee this is the end of the discussion on this item. I mean, if, if somebody wanted to amend it, I'm sure that could happen, but the, I do want to give Commissioner Beeler a chance to, to talk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, for, for the record, I do own a few guns, not, not other gun enthusiasts by any means. I really wanted to speak to, you know, just a couple of things that have been said by my colleagues, and by the way, I respect everything that's been said, you know, I know it's been said in a respectful way, and I know none of it's personal. But, but I, I wanted to speak to a couple of things, and, and, you know, first of all, th- this resolution has absolutely nothing to do with, with my concern or, or action in terms of helping navigate Knox County through this financial crisis. They're, they're completely unrelated. This resolution was worked on and crafted before the COVID crisis hit us and has been deferred since we have been having our meetings on Zoom. So the timing was certainly not intended the way that it's turned out. In, in terms of the positions that I've taken on, on beer board votes, I want to speak to that too. I absolutely one hundred percent respect every person, business owner's right under the laws of Knox County and the state of Tennessee to obtain a beer permit if they meet all the criteria. For that reason, I do not believe I have ever voted against anyone receiving a beer permit who met the criteria. I simply have a moral conviction, moral conviction when it comes to alcohol, that has, 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 has caused me to feel like passing when possible has been the best course of action for me. Otherwise, I couldn't serve. The, the, the other thing I want to speak to was, you know, the, the, the political intent behind this. Is it political? Of course, it's political, and I, and I'll say why. You know, the Constitution and especially the original articles in the Bill of Rights, I have a, when it comes to that, I take a very strict constructionist view. Meaning that it says what it means, and it means what it says. It is not open to new interpretations. If it needs to be changed, it can be amended, but not reinterpreted. The reason I say that is because for the original articles and the Bill of Rights, we have more than two centuries of established legal precedent from the Supreme Court as to what these things mean. Well-established. And yet, we have incredible differences of opinion in certain municipalities and even states when it comes to the Second Amendment. I even had a constituent very respectfully say to me that while they don't like this resolution, they support the Second Amendment because they believe that you should be able to have a gun in your house to defend your home. And, you know, that sounds reasonable. I, I've had others who have said, not constituents, but I have heard others who have said, they don't, they don't believe the Second Amendment ascribes any rights to private citizens to own weapons at all or guns at all. There, there are even some municipalities and states, for instance, in the state of New York, a court case about ten years ago, the New York Supreme Court said that the only way to get a carry concealed permit in New York is to prove that you need special protection. So, you know, all three of those views might sound reasonable to one group of people or the other, but they are simply not what two hundred years of legal precedent has said the Second Amendment means. The Second Amendment is a far more broad right of law-abiding citizens to bear arms. And if I were a judge or a lawyer, that would be considered a legal opinion, because I am a legislator, it's considered a political opinion. But I believe it's one that's important enough to state. I believe it's one that's important enough even for a county to state that, hey, you know what, this is our position. We believe in a strict constructionist view of the Constitution. And, you know, no, not every single person does, but in a majority, that's what we believe. We believe that, that, that the Second Amendment should be viewed in the way two hundred years of established legal precedent had said, has said it should be viewed. Not as some municipality somewhere may say that it should be viewed, but that, that legal precedent has established it should be viewed. You know, is, is it something we shouldn't do? I respect your heart. If that's what you, you think it's something that's out of our lane, I get that. And that, that does not mean to me that you don't support the Second Amendment. But I think statements like this are being made by municipalities, counties, and states, even states across our country. I believe Oregon is one. And I think it's worth, it's a statement worth making.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Beeler. Commissioner Anders, I see Wade would like to weigh in again.
Yes, sir. Question for the law director, Mr. Law Director, if you don't mind. On page, top, the top paragraph of page four of the resolution. The Board of will not authorize appropriate government funds, resources, employees, agencies, contractors, buildings, or offices for the purpose of enforcing or assisting any enforcement of any such acts. And then it goes on to talk about keeping bare arms, the United States Supreme Court. Does, so if the law changes, again, this resolution is a moot point anyway. I'm not saying the law's going to change. I don't think it ever will, but. And so is this, I mean, so is this saying that the county's going to be against what is currently the Second Amendment if the law changes?
No, this says that you're going to be for what the Second Amendment is. And you're enumerating some of those elements as it currently is. If the law changes, of course, any law, whether it be state or federal law, can always supersede the Charter, an ordinance, or a resolution when that change occurs. It's, it's an automatic thing. So every vote for any particular thing is in a moment of time, and it survives as long as a superior law that doesn't conflict with it. Because under our charter, we have to be in alignment with federal and state law.
Okay. And so if, can we be sued for resolutions? Can the county, is there a law, is there damages or anything that somebody could claim that? Could somebody take the, the county to court for that?
Well, people take the county court for anything they feel like they do, but you have qualified immunity in terms of your legislative powers. And, you know, winning it would be an entirely different.
Well, thank you.
Okay, I mean, I, see if there's any other discussion on that one. I mean, I, I guess that, that was one of the biggest challenges in this whole resolution was the, talks about us, you know, budgetary impact on that one, that we would not authorize or appropriate any kind of funds. Had it been up to me, you know, you, you, you probably could have written this in one page and not mentioned any budget. I saw a few weeks ago when I realized this is going to be in our, a month ago when I saw this is going to be on our agenda. I know I, I saw all sorts of different resolutions that other counties had passed. Not all of them were so lengthy. But this, this kind of is what it is. So that said, is there any other discussion on this one? Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Gill?
No.
Commissioner Gill votes no. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nastrom?
Going to pass.
Commissioner Nastrom passes. Commissioner Skunmaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Skunmaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bustler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bustler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Sorry, I can't understand. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay?
Pass.
Commissioner Jay passes. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Do the pass wish to change the vote?
No.
Commissioner Jay, do you, okay?
Thank you. Okay, it passes. Let's move on. All right, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item number forty-seven. Presentation of proclamation by the Knox County Mayor proclaiming April twenty twenty as Fair Housing Month in Knox County.
I think the goal was just to pass that one so that they could come back and recognize them at a later date, if I recall from our work session discussion, that, so we just needed to get this passed, and then.
Anderson's motion to approve.
Yeah.
Second.
All right, we have a motion for approval from Mr. Anders and a second from Beeler. Okay. Any discussion on this one? Okay. Matt, it's properly before us. Madam Clerk, could you lead a roll call vote?
Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nastrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nastrom votes aye. Commissioner Skunmaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Skunmaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bustler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bustler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. All members present voting aye.
All right. Thank you. It passes. Okay. And are there any other items? I know the, the next item was deferred to talk about the littering. Is there any other items that we've added or anything, Madam Clerk, that we need to get to, or is that kind of bring us to the end of the agenda?
That's to the end of the agenda. Zoning start at seven.
Yep. Zoning will start at seven. I know my fellow commissioners may have any announcements or anything like that. We don't, we, we do have quite a few items on zoning, so while we've got a, just a couple of minutes, are there any announcements anybody would like to make before we take a quick break? Go ahead, Commissioner Biggs.
Thank you, Chairman Nastrom. I would just like to take a second. We won't be meeting again before this happens, but I would like to take a second and say congratulations to all of the seniors in Knox County, though we'll be graduating in the next upcoming weeks, and I am proud of each and every one of them. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I've, I've got another announcement. I'll have to call on somebody for outside of our meeting, but Commissioner Daley?
I believe you're talking about the mayor's announcement.
Yeah. All right, Commissioner Anders?
Yeah, I just want to talk a little bit about charter review. Drusilla today sent me some dates that we had planned and looked at some of the calendar. So we'll try to put a calendar together and get it out to everybody in the next day or two.
Okay. Thank you. All right, go ahead. I'd like to call on Mayor Jacobs and his staff. I, I know that they wanted to make a, a kind of budget-related announcement. So I, if Chief Hare is there or Mayor Jacobs, if you'd like to kind of give us an update.
Chairman, this is Brian. Mayor just stepped out. He'll be right back in just a moment, but I can go ahead and announce. Next Monday on June the first, the mayor will be releasing his budget presentation. That will be posted at nine o'clock on Monday morning. So that's Monday, June the first, at nine o'clock AM is when he will provide his budget, budget presentation.
All right, very good. Any other announcements? Okay, seeing none. If the public wishes is here and is expecting us to transition straight into zoning, we're not. We will close this meeting. The zoning meeting is through a different link, so we're going to close this one out, and then we'll come back to, 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 to the next Zoom. So we've also gives us, we've got about fifteen minutes to take a break. All right, thank you, everybody. The meeting is adjourned.